My wife is so proud. I still work downtown. They all people walk in. Fifteen years ago.
I know that just sounds weird, but try Gatorade. It's like, it's like, yeah, Gatorade is like, boy, that's what I'm saying. I mean, and it's kept me from being in the hospital with the IV.
Yes, Mr. Hayden right behind you. Call the meeting to order. Roll call of aldermen, please.
Alderman Heisler.
Here.
Alderman Kinsella.
Here.
Alderman Meyer.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Rudgewitz.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Davidson.
Here.
Alderman Sillsby.
Here.
Alderman Hayden.
Here.
Alderman Cyrt.
Here.
Alderman White.
Here.
Alderman Galetti.
Here.
Alderman Musgrove.
Here.
Alderman Orlett.
Here.
Alderman Schneider.
Here.
He's here, he's just not here yet. Let's show that Alderman Hayden is here. Roll call department heads.
Police Chief Clay. Fire Chief Poor. City Attorney Flynn. Ken Vaughn. Royce Carlisle. Jamie Matron. Tim Gregwitz. Jim Schneider. Leander Spearman. Chuck Schaefer. Bob Sabo. Debbie Belville. City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
Okay. I have, several of the staff are ill this evening or have excuses. Chuck Schaefer, Debbie Belville. Royce is here, let's see, who else is? Who else did you say were missing?
Chuck, I mean Debbie Belville, there was another one.
Jamie, Jamie's excused, so all those are excused. All the aldermen are present. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would, please excuse my voice. Please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance.
(inaudible). Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If at some point tonight you can't understand or hear me, just raise your hand because this laryngitis is not going away and it's gotten worse. Just generally gotten worse. Okay, at this time, I'm going to, there's no public hearing this evening, but we're going to go into public participation. When I ask for you in just a minute to raise your hand if you're interested, please keep everything civil and please keep your comments to two to three minutes, preferably on something that's on the agenda, or at least that's part of the city's agenda. Yes, sir, you may go first.
Rick Brown, 125 Lucilla Lane, Shiloh, Illinois. Ain't been here in a while. I believe that the electrical board, or the electrical board, the election board on January the 5th, 2015 was a farce. The obituary on Mary McHugh, the family members that wrote it said that Alex McHugh lived in Nebraska. The driver's license that was gotten in Illinois was in around September, and you have 30 days from when you move here to have to get that. Occupancy permit wasn't obtained until just recently. Now, everybody loved Mary McHugh. We all did. But, and she was the, probably the most highly respected politician in St. Clair County. Everybody loved her, she was a jewel. But I also believe that Mayor Eckert, you got Alex to run for alderman in the 4th Ward. And I believe you did it to use his mother's good name. I believe that when Alex's candidacy was, I guess, objected to, that, Mr. Mayor, you got him Tom Peters as his attorney. I believe that. I believe that you should have recused yourself from that, being a judge on that panel because of the involvement you with, with you in the Alex McHugh campaign. There was 38 phone calls between you and Alex McHugh in 25 days between December 11th, 2014, and January 5th, 2015. One phone call was one hour before the hearing. I don't think anybody can be partial on a board like that when they're the judge. Now, Tom Holbrook has told me Friday that someone was trying to get Alex, I guess, from the city off the ballot, if he could get, and he told him that it's too late now that his name is going to stay on the ballot. I talked to Alex McHugh this afternoon, he told me he's still on the ballot. Now, I don't know what it is, but, you know, it doesn't seem, if people would look into the background of Mr. McHugh, there's plenty of public records, including St. Clair County, that shows suspended license, DUIs, four Class A misdemeanors, and this is before he moved to Omaha. Now, one Class A misdemeanor.
Mr. Mayor.
We're past the time, and you're now into personal, you're into personal.
Why is that personal? I'm just putting the fact out.
No, yes it is, it's become a personal.
I think that you should have vetted.
He's, he's.
One thing to criticize me, the system that put him on the ballot.
I believe that Mr. McHugh needs to, I'm talking here, sir.
Okay.
Oh, you're going to stop me?
Alderman, Alderman Davidson.
What about the First Amendment?
Alderman Davidson, Mr. Mr. Wrap it up.
When he got his occupancy permit, who did a seven-year nationwide criminal background check? Did anybody do that? He's not the owner of the home. You know, Johnny Anthony, talked to him, and he got all the signatures for Alex McHugh. Said, told me Alex didn't even know the boundaries of, the ward that he was supposed to represent. That's what you said, bud.
I didn't.
Yes, you did. And.
Enough, okay, your time is up, sir. Your time is up. Okay?
I think you better vet people before you get them on your ticket.
I don't have a ticket, sir. Okay, is there anyone else this evening that'd like to speak? Yes, sir.
Michael Hagberg, 701 Centerville Avenue. Comments about the business district plan that will be passed this evening. Initially, when the plan came to one of the committees, I believe Economic Development, there was a thing about issuing notes on it and using the TIF money to pay off those notes. And then it was told, it's like, no, the city's not going to be issuing any notes. But if you take a look at your business plan on page nine, section six, it says that in order to expedite implementation of the plan, the city of Belleville may issue obligations to pay for the project costs. If we aren't going to enter any notes, please take out this whole paragraph. It doesn't belong there. If we're not going to do it, you said you weren't going to do it. Why do you hide it in the agreement, saying, well, we'll hope nobody reads that part of it? Another is Exhibit B. We're told that the developer is going to lease the property from the shrine. Yet in here, they're asking for $2 million of reimbursement for property assembly cost and acquisition of land. We know the 33 acres that are being developed, we know who owns it, who, why is there $2 million on here for acquisition of land that they're going to be reimbursed for? Or am I misreading it and the $2 million is for something else? The land essentially is a field, except for one cement road that goes through it, fairly broken up already. Yet they have $2 million in here for site preparation costs. I believe that, you know, any demo we can have, we can get that road torn out of there for less than $2 million. And to summarize on the enterprise zone, the, one thing that wasn't in the developer's agreement was the 1%, or the sales tax abatement. We normally list an estimated amount on how much that will save the developer. I don't believe it was in the development plan. And the, my guesstimate on it is, it'll save them well over a million dollars on the project by not paying Illinois sales tax on building materials. Yet at the same time, the governor's saying that the state doesn't have the money to reimburse the cities their portion of the revenue that's coming from it. So how is it that we can sit there saying it's okay to give a successful developer a million dollar abatement and then turn around and complain to the state that we're not getting our fair share of the money back? Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else? Hearing none of my closed public participation. Going to move on this time to the presentation and recognition appointments. At this time, I would like to ask J.D., Mayor, a student at Altoff Catholic High School, to come forward and please share with us this month's character word. J.D.?
Thank you, Mayor Eckert. My name's J.D., I go to Altoff, and I'm a senior there, and I've been a part of the Basic Youth Board for four years, and our Word of the Month for March is perseverance. And that means to stay, to stay with the task and not giving up. So for example, in academics, sports, or even a job, you just have to persevere, and in the long run, you'll be successful at it. Thank you.
J.D., thank you, and thanks for the basic group, okay? Appreciate it very much. Also tonight, I want to make mention in the audience is Nicole Lafflin. Nicole, it's in the back of the room, raise your hand, Nicole. She's a student at Bellevue West, and she's working on her Gold Award, which is the highest award in Girl Scouting, equivalent to that of an Eagle Scout and Boy Scouting. And as we were talking, there's only about 5% of the girls who enter Girl Scouting that ever earn this award. It's very prestigious, and she's here listing tonight as one of the requirements, and also has a request in for her project under Communications. So Nicole, thank you, keep up the good work, and we hope you finish your, finish your award, okay? Very good. Okay, at this time, we're up to presentations, and I'd like to ask Mr. Gene Narber if he'd like to take the floor, and certainly they can hear him better than me, and talk about the eligibility study for the Route 15 TIF district.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, you can start, because the audience, I mean, the council has seen it on a couple occasions, and they should have it in their package.
The council has the boundary map in its package. This is our report pertaining to the eligibility of these 35 acres in the city of Belleville for tax increment financing. The area consists of 33 acres of undeveloped property right here. This is State 515, this is north Demazanad Drive, this is the Mammy facility, the shrine is over here. And we reviewed the conditions in this area to determine its eligibility for tax increment financing. Like to thank the city staff, property owners, utility companies, and various others that we worked with for providing us the information that we need in order to make our determination. This area meets the qualifying standards as eligible for tax increment financing in that it is a piece of property without commercial, industrial, or residential buildings, and it meets the definition found in the TIF Act as vacant. On that basis, then, we can proceed to determine whether it also meets the qualifying standards found in the Act. An area is eligible for tax increment financing if it meets two or more of a set of qualifying factors that are found in the law. And our review demonstrates that this area does in fact, is in fact, impacted by obsolete plating of vacant land. There's no provision inside the land for public right of way. That is a blight factor. We also find that there is deterioration of buildings or structures, and the law says in neighboring areas adjacent to such property. We reviewed all of the property here, this building, the residential and commercial property that's adjacent to the north of the vacant land, and found that there is deterioration in neighboring areas adjacent to such vacant land. And the third factor that we found in this set of a number of factors is that the equalized assessed value of this property, which has been stagnant for 10 or more years, and the standard is that for this piece of property, the equalized assessed value is, and what we found, is growing less than the Consumer Price Index for three of the last five years. Consumer Price Index has been growing over the last, for more than three of the last five years, and in fact, while the Consumer Price Index is growing, the value of this property has remained the same. In addition, there are a series of standalone factors, and we found that the area is impacted by two. There is flooding on all or part of the vacant land as identified by a registered professional engineer, and that there is an area of mining that impacts this area in that 25%, about 25% of the area is located within what is called an indefinite underground coal mine boundary, and the remainder of this proposed TIF area is situated in an underground mine proximity region. And so our summary, which is on page 11 of the study, states that the undeveloped parcel meets the definition of vacant land and qualifies as a blighted area, as the sound growth of the area is impaired by a combination of plating, obsolete plating or plating which failed to create rights of way for streets and alleys, deterioration of structures and site improvements in neighboring areas adjacent to the vacant land, a lack of growth and equalized assessed value, and in particular, the presence of flooding on all or part of such vacant land. Mr. Mayor, those are our findings, and certainly if you have any questions, if you would catch.
Any members of the council have any questions about the TIF? Yes, ma'am.
You're saying it floods, and you were talking about the mining and that. Has there been a study, or do we know, is this project, if it passes, going to take the, all the extra work and money that the Walmart project took because they had to pump concrete and concrete in the mine because of it settling in that? Bellevue, we all know, is, a lot of it undermined. So what's going to happen to that? And why would you want to build on something that's flooding, that has a tendency to flood?
Well, that's a question that only the developer can address. We're looking at whether this area meets the standard to be a blighted area, and there's clearly chronic flooding on the vacant.
You stated.
They don't have to address that, yes, ma'am.
That there's chronic flooding. Why would anybody want, well, we can't get questions. Well, I'll get to that to the next point. But I would like to know why they want to build on something that's chronic flooding.
Why they want to build on something that is chronically flooded.
And who's going to take care of the extra expense, and?
Well, those costs, I believe, have been made part of their pro forma. And as to why they would want to build, they can answer that, but I'll tell you, given my understanding, if this site can be made ready for development, it's a pretty good site.
So there'll be flooding and mine subsidence, which is all over west Bellevue, right?
The area, there is a portion of the area that is subject to chronic flooding, yes, and it is in these intermediate mined areas, yes, sir, the geological survey.
We, we have a portion in Bellevue that the houses were tore down. We weren't even going to be able to build the bathroom down at Huff Park until they moved it up out of the flooding area. How does the state let this happen? I mean, if it's deemed a flooding area, especially chronic flooding, I don't see how they can get the permits to do it. We couldn't get a permit to build the bathroom at Huff Park because of the chronic flooding, because of the creek there. There's the houses, people, we had to, they were bought out because of the chronic flooding, because of the creek there.
It's, Alderman Schneider, there's two different, several different factors there. You're talking about with the houses on Second Street, that was because we use FEMA money to tear them down, and they have certain requirements, totally different.
But it's still chronic flooding, sir.
But they're going to have to, they're going to have to remedy the chronic flooding. The engineers and the developer are going to have to correct that.
We'll absorb the cost.
No, you're going to absorb, absorb no more than what's?
We're already absorbing so much. The $287,000 for the sewer study. I mean, none of those things should be approved until the TIF gets approved. I mean, we're spending all this money to get these things done, and it's not going, if it goes nowhere, we've spent this money. We've already, just for Master Sewer, they're already starting the surveying, what it's going to cost us to get easements and that. This work isn't being done for nothing. It's costing us.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Narber in regards to the study, eligibility study for the Route 15 North TIF district?
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Narber, there are pages seven and eight of the eligibility study. There are a number of addresses that are listed that fall under your heading of deterioration of buildings adjacent to such property. The first is the address of the Missionary Association of Mary Immaculate Building, 9480 North Demazanad Drive, rusted, dented, rotted, cracked, molding, gutters, spouts, et cetera. The owner of that property is who?
I do not know the owner.
Is it in or outside the proposed TIF?
It is in a neighboring area adjacent to the.
Okay, and 259 Oblate Lane?
The same.
The same. And again, we're mentioning the metal access door in the back of that building at 9480. The ceiling of the Shrine Hotel, separated from the walls, interior ceiling tiles are cracked, molded, water damaged. Interior bricks inside the front door are damaged. Electrical outlets are hanging from the ceiling panels. Again, that property would be outside the proposed TIF?
The standard is deterioration of buildings or site improvements in neighboring areas adjacent to.
As is the case with 442 South Demazanad Drive, which would represent the restaurant and gift shop. Page eight, the maintenance buildings at 442 South Demazanad Drive, 9977 Old St. Louis Road, dilapidated doors, windows missing, broken throughout, all wood building elements, et cetera, et cetera. Again, that property's in, outside, I guess, the TIF. Who is the owner of that residence at 9977 Old St. Louis Road?
I do not have that.
Okay. The exterior of the barn structure at 9975 Old St. Louis Road, dented throughout, again, outside the, the proposed TIF, I suppose you don't know the owner of that property either.
It's not a requirement to know, no, sir.
Okay.
And the standard has nothing to do with buildings inside the TIF.
No, I understand, I understand the standard, sir. Okay. The resident at 7648, 7656 Chase Lane, that is a burned-out former residence. Again, that is outside, is that even in the city of Bellevue?
I do not have that.
I guess the bottom line is that all of these aforementioned addresses fall outside of the proposed development area, so my question is, how does the real blight identified on pages 78 get remediated?
The standard set, the standard included in the statute is deterioration in neighboring areas adjacent to such.
But again, this is property, okay, with, some of which is inside the city limits now.
Yes, sir.
We're using that to define this as reason for blight.
Yes, sir.
But what are we going to do to correct that blight?
Well, at this moment in time, none of that is in the TIF area, so the answer is not TIF. With respect to addressing that blight, that's an issue that the owners of the property want to address.
And aren't they going?
Ma'am, would you raise your hand first? Go ahead.
No.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Well, aren't these owners, do they know that their properties have been assessed to determine the property next to them blighted? It's their, it's their fault that this property is blighted? I mean, that, that's not fair to the property owners.
It's, it's.
I mean, to get it blighted so that a TIF can be created, and the TIF isn't even going to be created where the blighted area is, it's around the area, as you stated. That's not fair to the homeowners or?
We can make no determinations to whether there is blight in these areas. The standard is deterioration of buildings or structures. We did our fieldwork, and there certainly is deterioration.
Mr. Narber, in your dialogue with Alderman Randall, some of the buildings that you were talking about are actually owned by the shrine. And I think the shrine made it very clear in every meeting they've been in, that one of the things they're hopeful is that a development like this will help them possibly have a new revenue stream that they can address some of the deterioration that's going on, such as at the hotel. And that was explained over and over again at numerous meetings, that that's the importance of why they need to, to put that property across the street that's been vacant to good use. Alderman Meyer, something different? I mean, Alderman Schneider, something different?
Yes, all right, we're talking about the Shrine Hotel and that, and the buildings there on the property that is annexed into the city now, so then they should have to abide by our codes as far as repairs needing to be made, and they, they should get a letter, and they need to get it done now. I mean.
Alderman Schneider, we're working with them already, okay?
But it's not fair to the other homeowners and other landlords that have to get their property up to code.
Alderman Schneider, they came to us willingly to annex, and we're, we've assessed these things through this study, and, and in a fair, due process of time, they're going to make corrections. But we're not here to beat up a new member of the city the first week, or first month or two that they're into city limits. We're not here, I mean, you have to have some patience. We're not here to, to take the newest person in that's coming in with the potential fabulous development for everyone and, and, and try to see how many things we can write down that's wrong with them.
Well, don't we do that to any other landlord, because they're going to be the landlord of the property?
Ma'am, we, we are, we, the fire department's been out there, we are already working with them, they're already attempting to correct many little things, and there's other things that will be corrected in time, and we will work with them as a good, as a good citizen.
Will they be given the same amount of time that any other landlord is given when our letters go out to these people, they have to correct these problems?
First of all, the housing department has not cited them all this. This is an ablight study that is to qualify.
But it says that this.
You're, you're, you're mixing, you're not comparing apples to oranges. You're comparing apples to oranges. You're not comparing this straight up. We'll be glad to talk with you more about this, but you're, you're mixing this up, trying to prove a point that, that, that we need to hold their feet to the fire to fix these things. Believe me, the shrine wants to make a lot of improvements. That's why they want this development. That's why they want it, and we certainly want them to do that.
Couldn't it be considered at the taxpayers' expense to get these problems?
No, you could, ma'am, Alderman Schneider, you can look at anything any way you choose to.
Well, I'm just looking out for the people in my ward.
Well, I'm going to tell you, the people.
I mean, they're not wanting to dole out money when they have.
There's, there's nobody doling out any money, with the exception of what you mentioned as the set for the sewer study. There is no money being given to the shrine, and nothing being done other than when they produce it and they get re-baited. The only thing in advance is the sewer study.
And we already have the highest sales tax rate, we're going to be giving them an extra 1%.
Okay, that's, that's the business district, yes, ma'am. Alderman Davidson.
Could we please get back to the subject at hand? We've gone over this over and over and over.
I, I understand.
We're talking about the TIF right now, and I'd like to get back to that.
Are there any other questions about the eligibility study? Mr. Narber, I would ask you now to proceed with the Route 15 Business District Plan, please. I think it's a safe, ma'am.
The area has been found to be blighted under the Business District Development and Redevelopment Law, and the city's asked us to create the Business District Plan. I'd like to speak very briefly about how business districts work and the funding mechanism that's created by the implementation of a business district. In, in this case, the Business District will levy an additional 1 percent sales tax on all goods sold that are subject to sales tax at 1 percent, at an additional 1 percent, and an additional hotel motel tax of 1 percent. That's the driver for revenue generation in, in the Business District. The revenue is then used for the planning and execution of the Business District, implementation of the Business District Plan, and to pay such Business District costs are identified in, in the plan document. The plan identifies the objectives and policies for this area, and on page seven provides a general description of the projects or projects. They include privately developed commercial uses within the district and investment in public infrastructure as well. The private projects proposed to be undertaken throughout the district include, but are not limited to, site preparation including remediation, demolition, clearance and grading, the development of commercial buildings and structures associated parking areas and fields, screening and landscaping on the site, including but not limited to the construction of 130-room upscale six-story hotel, a 30,000-square-foot conference center, a brewery-themed restaurant which has been identified as Hofbrauhaus, and a gas and diesel convenience fast-food facility on 15. Improvements in addition up to four restaurants and the necessary infrastructure to serve that development. In addition, the district looks to make improvements to the ingress and egress to and from the district itself, and these, these are all identified in the plan. Public projects, extension of city utilities, construction and reconstruction, relocation of, of other utilities, and improvements to the public infrastructure that does exist to serve this district. So a combination of efforts on both sides. The Business District Plan also makes a series of findings that the area to be designated as the Route 15 North Business District is contiguous, that it includes only parcels of real property directly and substantially benefited by the plan, that the district in its entirety is located within the municipal boundaries of the city, and the district is a blighted area, which by the predominance of defective, nonexistent, or inadequate street layout, unsanitary or unsafe conditions, deterioration of site improvements, improper subdivision or obsolete plating, or the existence of conditions which endanger life or property by fire or other causes, or any combination of those factors, retards the provision of housing accommodations, constitutes an economic or social liability, and economic underutilization of the area or is a menace to the public health, safety, morals, or welfare. The district on the whole has not been subject to growth and development. As you can probably see, this concrete road, which is now badly deteriorated, was built about 50 years ago in response to a plan to build residential units essentially across the street from, from the Shrine. In the intervening 50 years, there has been no private investment in this area. Its value has stagnated, it remains valid, doesn't contribute any development, any activity, or any revenues to the city. The Business District budget is identified in the plan of $7,130,000 and is divided among a number of activities, including the costs of surveys, studies, developments of plans and specifications, property assembly costs, site preparation costs, and the costs of installation, repair, construction, or reconstruction or extension of various utilities.
Any questions for Mr. Narber? Alderman Galetti?
During your research, did you put a number on the assessed value of the property?
We reviewed the developer's analysis of its value and the revenues that it will produce, yes.
What I'm saying is, is there a document, or is there information that the county has generated on the assessed value of the property for purposes, for tax purposes?
Not to my knowledge, sir.
Do you know why that is?
No, I don't.
Also, is, are there, are there particular statutory requirements for this plan? In other words, does this plan need to contain certain things to comply with the law?
It needs to contain an eligibility and, and analysis of the eligibility. It needs to make certain findings, and it needs to identify tenants, users, and developers, all of which are contained in the plan. The financing of the plan, again, is predicated on the generation of these incremental taxes. If there are no tax incremental taxes generated, the developer is...
I believe somebody in the public participation talked about number six on page nine. Okay. It has to do with the, the city and its obligations to finance, or potentially finance, the project through...
Well, yes, I'm sorry.
And I just wanna know, is that, is that something that's sort of, you know, thrown in and is boilerplate to the majority of these plans, or is, was that something you specifically anticipated Belleville having to do in this particular project?
Yeah, it's not an obligation, the word obligation in, in item six is not an obligation in terms of the city having to do something. An obligation...
Yes, it says "may."
Yes, and, and so it's, the city's not obligated, and an obligation is a loan, mortgage, borrowing, some, something that that's... The city may do these things. The city is not obligated to finance this project in any manner. This is language that appears in the statute, and it appears in this plan, because it is statutory language, yes, sir.
What, does a statute require this language be in the plan?
Well, we have to identify the anticipated type in terms of any obligations to be issued, yes. That is part of it.
So again, this is something that's added into all these plans, because it's in the statute?
Well, there is in all plans, there is a statement pertaining to the anticipated type in terms of any obligation to be issued, yes.
If this paragraph wasn't in this plan, could the city still do what the paragraph says?
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Could it, could, could you remove paragraph six from this document, but the, but the city, according to the statute, could do, still do these things, or may do these things?
No, I, I think if the, the city gives itself the opportunity it may do certain things, I think it's wise to have it in. This all talks about things that may or may not happen. They may be issued pursuant to the plan. The city anticipates that if issued, things will happen. Language needs to be in the plan pertaining to the anticipated types in terms of obligations to be issued. This is, I think, reasonable language to have at this moment.
I just wanna know that, that it's because of the statute and that this thing was added in, and that no specifics were discussed while you were generating this particular plan regarding paragraph six?
No specifics regarding the financing of the plan?
Correct.
There were no, I, I did not hear any specific...
Regarding this particular financing?
I did not hear any specific discussion pertaining to the city issuing...
Thank you.
Alderman Schneider?
Page seven, downwards, this development of commercial buildings and structures in parking. And that, it says up to four scale restaurants. So if that, when it says up to four, that doesn't mean they have to do it. They do the one, and they're free to go. It says up to four. It should say they will put four upscale restaurants, not up to. Up to means they can, if they do, and if they don't, they don't.
Well, they...
I mean, it's in the contract, but that's the way it's worded.
Well, that, that is the way it's worded, and if in fact they build less, then there will be less revenue drawn from the area.
But it makes it sound like there's gonna be four upscale restaurants. It should say when they should be constructed by and that, not just up to. That means that they could do the one, and that's it. But then yet, we've done all this extra work, and the TIF's been created, and really, none of the, well, maybe the study needed to be done, but we're putting, we don't even have the TIF approved after doing all this work and all this stuff. We don't even know if the TIF's gonna be approved, 'cause it will be after the election when there will be new aldermen in here.
Any other questions or comments? Alderman Hayden?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Narber, while you're here, I got a question that's not specifically related to these two studies, but it's all, it's a third key aspect of the development. From what I understand, if the developers don't get the TIF, they walk. If they don't get the Business District, they walk. But we're also in the process, as you're aware of, of expanding our enterprise zone boundaries and presenting them to the state, which is also a key factor to this whole development. My question to you, sir, is, do you have any knowledge or feedback as to how that aspect of, of enterprises is going, and the approval process as it relates to the new Governor Roner? And I ask that question based on, we just got news last week that, that if, if his, you know, programs go in place, the city of Belleville could be forced to lose $2.2 million. There's other proposed cuts out there. This does not seem to be a governor that's gonna be willing to want to rebate sales tax of, of any proportion, whether it be local or statewide. So do you have any input on where that's gonna stand, or is there a threat to that program?
I can tell you where we are in our process, our collective process.
Sure, thank you.
The application has, really has two parts. The first is to the Department of Agriculture, to see if the Department of Agriculture has any specific concerns regarding the proposed expansion. They do not. We've received clearance from the Department of Agriculture, and our application is now moving to, to, sorry, the Department of Commerce and Economic Development. It is there, it is in the process of being reviewed, and that is the extent of my knowledge.
Okay. I, I would like, Your Honor, since Mr. Narber's our consultant, if he could, to, to possibly research what is out there, because I'm very concerned that we could be spending, if the enterprise zone is part of this deal, and, and we've got a governor, Your Honor, that's, in essence, wanting to eliminate these type programs, then that's the third...
There's been no speculation that he's trying to eliminate anything with businesses. What he's, what, that's came back, what's come back to us, and what you received from the IML, was that he's proposing possible cuts in our income tax.
No, 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 I understand it, Your Honor.
So there's been, there's been nothing written that I've seen, and I've read bulletin after bulletin, and I've talked to countless people that I sit on the IML board with in the last several weeks, and there's no indications that Roner, at this time, is talking anything about cutting business. If anything, his platform seems to be that he's pro-business, and, and while we could, it's true, we could see some cuts in income tax, is what he's saying, all the more reason we need to develop some sales tax areas of support that could help us offset any possible losses. So this makes this project even more, in my opinion, more valuable than ever.
You're, you're, you misunderstood my question. I, I'm not saying that the governor is wanting to cut business. I'm asking if staff or our consultant can look into it more specifically, and even ask to various agencies if the governor's looking and proposing to do away with types of enterprise zones, because the enterprise zones rebate sales tax, which will affect the sales tax also garnered by the state of Illinois. And I just, with everything that is out there, I would say it would be very intelligent on our city's part to, to start exploring that, because that seems to be another avenue that this governor may be going with, because I don't see him with the programs that he is already starting to, to cut, the taxes that he doesn't want to give back to local municipalities, to be too friendly on wanting to rebate massive sales tax, not only by the city of Belleville, but other communities across the state.
We will look into it further, but as I said, while I, we can debate all night long with the governor, mayor...
I'm asking a question.
We will look into it. We will, we will have to make some inquiries, but there's no indications at this time that this new governor has made any inkling to cutting or forbidding or stopping the enterprise zone process.
I understand, but we just learned last week a, a new cut that affected us, so these things could happen over that.
We, we heard, we heard that potential.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we will look at it. But once again, if, if the, if the developer doesn't have this tool, I think it's been very clear, but for, that it's very doubtful this project would go forward. Eric, you're on the Enterprise Zone Board?
Yeah, I'm, I'm on the Board of Directors for the Illinois Enterprise Zone Association. I tell you, the association in every zone is very concerned about this very issue, Alderman Hayden, and the, the Board is trying to set a meeting with not only the governor, but the, the new Director of DCEO to talk about this very issue. There is a, a hearing, I think it's a Finance Committee hearing, or Revenue Committee this, this week, and we will have a representative from the Enterprise Zone Board there to talk about the zones and, and how, how important they are to economics.
Do you tend those, Eric, regularly?
The Enterprise Zone...
Board meetings?
Board meetings, yes.
Can you keep us appraised?
Absolutely.
What's going on?
Absolutely.
Thank you. You answered my question.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I'd have a comment, and I'm really directing this at the media, that when they report on this, we report why we are calling this a blighted area accurately. I've heard from several people that have questioned this, as I questioned it years ago, when the city council, which I was not a member of at the time, said that the Walmart area was blighted. And you heard lots of comments saying, well, you know, it's not blighted, it's, it's a cornfield. How can a cornfield be blighted? And getting information from the local media did not inform me of what exactly the city council had done at that time, that they were simply following the Illinois Municipal Code as to what a blighted area is, and I would really request that the media accurately report that, so that we don't hear this in the future, that we took a green area and called it blighted when it wasn't a burnt-out structure, and not a...
I think, I think Mr. Narber has explained very detailed in recent days, again tonight, that because of things like chronic flooding, plating, all these different issues, insufficient roads, all these different things are all blighting factors, and they have to have so many of them to meet the criteria. So I, I think we're all a bit educated on that, and it's a number of things, and it doesn't necessarily mean that the area, that the developers can't overcome these factors, but it, of course, it takes resources and funds to, to correct them and, and make the area viable. And that's what this developer, that's why he's seeking, that these, this group of people are seeking our assistance, because they do have a lot of hurdles to overcome. Okay? Anything else on this presentation here? Hearing none, we're gonna move on to the approval of the minutes, and we'll be back to this for a vote a little later on. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes from February 17, 2015. Mr. Heisler?
I'd like to receive and file the approval, minutes, the council meeting minutes from February 17, 2015.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussions about the, yes, ma'am?
Yes, and I'd like to make it clear, I think we're, that we are including the addition that the city...
It's on your table.
that, um, the city-
It's on your table, okay. Is there, everybody understand that, that we would supplement that and add that to it? That's on your desk?
The red stuff?
Yes. Okay. That was provided by the clerk's office? With that motion and a second, and that understanding of that insertion, uh, all in favor of receiving and filing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Claims, payroll and disbursements, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion to pay the claims, payroll and disbursement. So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt, do I hear discussion on the claims, payroll?
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Motion's, motion carries. We have a housing report of cash receipts for fiscal year 2014-15 through January 15, 2015. What's your pleasure?
I move we accept and file.
Motion by Alderman Kinsella, second by Alderman Meyer, do I hear a discussion? All in favor of accepting and filing this report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Oral reports, uh, we'll start with, um, Finance Committee.
Your Honor, on behalf of the Finance Committee, I'd like to make the following motion. Motion to approve Haring Impact Strategies, Inc., as construction manager, as constructor for Police Department City Hall Project. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman White, do I hear, um, discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Next motion, Alderman Sillsby?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the termination of the lease at 720 West Main Street, Suite 150, effective no later than May 31, 2015. So moved.
We have a motion, second by Alderman Si- uh, Cybert. Discussion on this motion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, we go now to, uh, the next page, page three. Alderman Cybert.
Yes, Your Honor, I have, uh, four motions to make, no objection. I make them as having more.
Anybody care if we do these as a group? Go ahead, Mr. Cybert.
Motion to approve Volkerd in the amount of $12,621 for design services for 400 block of North Virginia. Motion to approve EFK Moon LLC to the amount of $48,670 for design services for East Main Street res servicing Oak Street to Douglas. A motion to approve Cascaski Engineering Group LLC in the amount of $52,160 for design services for Vani to Place Phase Two. And a motion to approve Oates and Associates in the amount of $23,997.15 for design services Prairie Drive, Wabash Avenue to Garden Boulevard. So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Cybert, Alderman Hayden?
Second.
We have a second by Alderman Hayden, do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion's carry. Alderman, um, Kinsella?
I make a motion to accept the Route 15 North TIF District Eligibility Study and place it on file.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. We have a motion, a second, to approve the Route 15 TIF District Eligibility Study and place on file. Discussion, Alderman Galetti?
What does it mean that we accept the study?
It's, it's that this body is accepting it to be on file for review and that we recognize the study has been put together by EDR and that it's available for us to.
Okay, that, that was generally my understanding. I just wanted to make sure that we're not, we're not accepting the substance of the study by voting to.
Tonight, what you're doing is you're accepting the fact that Mr. Norber here gave you a report on his findings and on where he's at in the process.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Hayden?
Your Honor, that, that, in answer, at least in my opinion, from my colleague's question, yes, that we, we are being asked to accept the substance. If you're voting to accept the file, you're accepting the substance.
I think we, I think we agree to that. We're-
Well, I, I want to make sure his question was answered correctly.
That we're, that we're, we're accepting his report, what he found.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was getting at. Not that he did it, not that we hired him to do it, he did it, and now he's moving on to the second part.
What he found in the study, we're accepting that and we're putting that on file for review.
Okay.
Okay? Okay. So we have a motion, a second, to accept, uh, EDR's, uh, TIF District Eligibility Study and place it on file. There's no further discussion, roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
No.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
No.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
No.
Schneider.
No.
I got four no, it'd be 12 yes?
Yes.
Motion carries. We go to the next one, Alderman Sillsby?
Excuse me, I make a motion-
I'm sorry, Kinsella. Apologize.
I make a motion to authorize economic development resources to complete the Route 15 North TIF District redevelopment plan.
We have a motion by Alderman Kinsella, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Anthony, do I hear discussion on that? Alderman Hayden?
Yes, uh, so this, uh, motion, EDR, to complete the Route 15 North TIF District redevelopment plan, what, so what part is this gonna include now, based on what we've already been shown?
Now, he's gonna go ahead and put the, for lack of better words, the meat and potatoes in the plan, right, Mr. Norber?
Yes, sir.
I mean, it's where the details are all put into the, each TIF plan. The budget, all these types of things, right?
You know, the goals, objectives and policies, uh, findings that need to be made to be incorporated into the plan, the budget, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I've, I've, I've been searching, searching through this, trying to find, uh, in vain ways to, uh, to support this. Uh, but once again, as I stated at previous meeting, that the lack of proper vetting on the, uh, the city's behalf, uh, just the lack of, uh, to me, open communication throughout this process. I, I've only met the developer one time and it, it was behind closed doors, which I deplored having to do, but, uh, that was my only opportunity to meet with them. I, I was going back and looking at, uh, over the, the weekend, various, you know, different agreements over the years, uh, you know, e- even, even a person wanting, you know, like, uh, sales tax rebate, uh, you know, had, had to submit their application. They had to go before, you know, the Economic Development Committee and Finance Committee in, in here. These people who are wanting to, uh, uh, move forward with this development, with, with the TIF and get TIF rebate and, and get the tax money back from the, the citizens of Belleville, and yes, it is the citizens of Belleville's money. I've still yet to see anybody prove to me that once I pay my taxes, I still own it, it's my money to do what I want with it. Uh, these people, Your Honor, they've not met, they've not met before one committee.
They've not met what?
They've not met before one committee, not spoke before one committee. I don't recall-
That's, that's not true.
I don't recall them speaking for-
The development agreement went before, I'm sorry to interrupt you, sir. Uh, the development agreement went before the Economic Development Committee, the Finance Committee and City Council.
They weren't here.
They were here. They were here at the last one?
They've not-
But they don't talk.
They've never, my point is, Your Honor, and I hit the floor, these people, these people are wanting tax rebates from the city of Belleville and they're wanting the city of Belleville to support their development, and they have not spoken nor answered. At the last meeting, Your Honor, you answered all the questions for them. Uh, they've not, not spoken directly what the people want, and, and I find that-
Well, Mr. Hayden, I think, and Mr. Uh, Mr. Forrest Langenfeld spoke and said, made it very clear, and some of you here, I believe who personally called you, they've been willing to, to meet any of you anytime and, you know, they've been-
I've asked that through your office, and that hasn't been set up yet.
When now?
I, I asked that through, uh, email through your office to, uh, meet with them again in like 48 hours' notice. I've not heard a response to that.
When did you email that, Mr. Hayden?
Uh, when I sent you the, uh, two memos that I went through asking for the vetting process. You can go back and look at it, it's in the memo, sir. Um, it, they, they didn't even, you know, of course, I wasn't at the public hearing because I was, uh, uh, being, uh, you know, doing my automatic duties, so I was negated my citizen right to be at a public hearing. Uh, but they didn't even, they didn't even present anything during the public hearing. That was all done by Mr. Norber. I, I, I just, that, that bothers me, and I, I want you to know that, Mayor. I, I think these people should, should be meeting, if they want to meet and make money off the city of Belleville, they, they should be, other than a, a press conference at the shrine at 10 o'clock in the morning on, on a day, you know, when, when people can't get there. It, they need to get out and meet the people, and they need to talk to the public, and, and, and let's not do it behind closed doors, let's do it in front of the public.
There's a number of Aldermen here will tell you that they did meet and answer questions and take phone calls, so I, I just happen to disagree with you respectfully. Alderman Schneider?
Uh, yes. I think what, um, Alderman Hayden's trying to say is, they've been here, but it's been done in meetings where only five Aldermen or less were there to avoid the Open Meetings Act. What they need to do is be here and address the public. This, this was filled with people at the last city council meeting because the public hearing was before then. I asked question, and you told me I had to meet privately with them. And the question I asked, one of the main one was, they gave us the ultimatum. Either we do it their way and give them what they want, or they're gonna hit the road.
No.
No, no, that was, that is exactly, and you said it too. But my question was, and it's very important, they gave this big list of all these developments that they've done, and I asked the question, "All right, out of all these developments you have done," and I had to speak to you, you did not have them come up and speak to the public so that they could hear the answer. How many other developments were done with TIFs? Are we the only one that ga- is giving them TIFs to do this development? Never have received an answer on this. It, it was questioned, and you said, "Alderman Schneider, you can meet with them and call with them." No, then that isn't public. It needs to be public, 'cause it's every one of the taxpayers that is involved in this. It's just not us Aldermen or the mayor. They should've been up here and when questions were asked, come to the microphone and answer them, not you. And you made the comment to me that I missed the meeting. Yes, I missed the meeting because I was at work, but it was only five Aldermen or less. It wasn't a public meeting. So anything that we said or did in there could not be discussed. It's just like when you tell me I have to call him and discuss it with him privately. Then my constituents cannot hear what's going on. I asked the question, "How many other developments have they done with TIF money?" They don't even speak to the public. They speak to you, or the department heads, and like it was said, it was a private meeting, because all of us Aldermen could not even be there at one time, or we would've violated the Open Meetings Act. So this is, this should not be going any further.
You're entitled to your opinion, Alderman, uh, Schneider. Alderman Schmidt?
Aren't we voting to authorize EDR to complete the plan?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I believe we have a motion, a second on the floor for this, all right?
Yes.
Correct? At this time, there's no further discussion, I'd call for a roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Randall.
No.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
No.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
No.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
No.
Schneider.
No.
So it's five this time, so it's 11 to five. Motion carries. Uh, Alderman, um, we move on to, there's one more comment, uh, Alderman Kinsella?
I make a motion to accept the Route 15 North Business District Plan and place it on file.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kinsella, second by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion on the Business District Plan, accepting and filing. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Randall.
No.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
No.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
No.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
No.
Schneider.
No.
Motion carries, 11 to 5?
Yes.
We move on, communications.
12A, request from Southwestern Illinois Colleges, Programs and Services for Older Persons, City of Belleville and Belleville Township to hold their Belleville Senior Celebration on Friday, May 8, 2015, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at 201 North Church Street. They are also requesting for the 200 block of North Church Street to be blocked off at both ends from 7:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. Barricades at Church Street, entrance of St. Luke's Parking Lot, the B Lot be reserved for guests. 10 picnic tables and four trash toters that morning with one table and one trash toter to be placed in the back courtyard by the barbecue grills, and the other nine tables and three trash toters in front.
Motion by Alderman Meyer.
Second.
Second by Turner Ward, and second by Alderman Schmidt. Uh, discussions on this Discussions on this first communication, all in favor of approving this signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next one, please.
12B, Nicole Loughlin, Future Girl Scout Gold Award recipient, is requesting a 5K and informational fair in hopes of bringing more awareness to service animals, animals and companions. This will start at Belleville West Junior High, crossing Royal Heights Road, west on North Park Drive, towards the south side of Memorial Hospital around Bellevue Park, east on South Park Drive, continuing east on Shirley Drive, north on North 39th Street, west on South Park Drive, north on North 43rd Street, east on North Park Drive, crossing Royal Heights Road, ending back at Belleville West Junior High. There is a request for two police officers, one to be at Royal Heights Road and South Park Drive, and the other at West Park Drive and North 48th Street. The 5K will begin at 9:00 a.m. and end around 10:00 a.m.
Motion that we comply with the request.
Motion by Alderman Anthony, do I hear a second?
Second.